It looks right, so I see. I think it's going through our.
Oh, I see.
Please confirm. I think it is.
Yeah, we're gonna call.
I think it is. Hey.
Yeah?
Corey, can you, can you get on the Facebook though, at the E-P agency, we're live right now? Sorry, you're the last, last person I spoke with, so I just.
You're our last one.
397 already, and we're on the right page, right?
Ooh, I see it.
We're on, we're good, good. All right, thank you. All right. Brian, you.
What's that?
Uh, Brian, we were just watching, you muted your camera, is that correct?
How about that?
Yeah, well, that's better.
Did I do, did I do good?
You did excellent.
Okay. Awesome. Is it just gonna be, uh, I don't see anybody else on, uh, Zoom than Mayor and I, is there anybody else on there?
Um, you see us?
Well, I'm sorry, other than you and the Mayor, I don't see, uh.
That's, that's how many we have so far.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Would you mind if I go to say, Mr. Ross, only for.
Mr. Ross, uh, this meeting will be only for board members today.
I don't think it did. No, it didn't, yeah, yeah, we're good.
I did.
Yeah.
You can sit here for a while.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, man, fucking.
I think we're in close, thanks for checking on people.
I don't think you tested my W's yesterday.
Put this under. Not that, not that he's leaving, not that he's leaving.
Definitely.
Jeremy, did current check contact.
Yes.
I'll take that.
Yeah, uh, oh, um, no, sorry, the only person I heard from was, uh, versatile, same, same way. I haven't heard anything.
Tom Cooper? Okay, but they, they will be here and, uh. Let me.
Oh, good, where?
Tyler, I can't wait for you today.
You might welcome their.
Hi, Carlecia and Kurt.
Good morning.
Morning.
What, great, what are you talking?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Hernandez, did you want water or coffee?
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, can I get an incentive for a standing deal?
Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm not trying to mess up the six-foot row back.
I'm just reminding, we are live on Facebook, so. Okay, let's wait.
Good morning.
Good morning, and. So good to see you all. So, uh, you're such a historic time.
The phone fly.
Do you care for any coffee, anything? Great water. All right.
We're ready.
Thank you. Good morning, uh, board members, those of you who are here in person, uh, as well as those of you who are joining this board meeting through digital platform and virtually, um, as well as those who are following this board meeting, members of the public, um, as it is being streamed live. This is, uh, now time for us to call the roll and determine a quorum, please.
Estella Hernandez.
Here.
Kurt Bolinbach.
Hi.
Here.
Carlecia Bradley-Williams.
Here.
Bill Flanagan.
Here.
Brian Boback.
Here.
Jennifer Munnies.
Here.
Superintendent Hofmeister.
Here, all right, we have a quorum, we are all here on the phone, and by the way, it is wonderful to see Board Member, uh, Bill Flanagan, who we have missed for, uh, a number of weeks, and we're so pleased to see you joining the meeting this way. Uh, board members, this meeting, uh, will include, uh, teleconferencing or videoconferencing, but there will be parties present at the, um, Oliver Hodge Building here today, uh, as well, and so we have just heard who is here present and who is, uh, here virtually as well. Um, there is also a public Facebook page right now that anyone is able to go to at I'd like to share with you some information before we begin today's business. Uh, as a update on the coronavirus, uh, we have 106 positive cases as of yesterday, we know that number is going to change again today. Uh, there were very sadly three deaths already in our state. Governor Stitt announced yesterday that he is enforcing a safer-at-home order statewide. If you haven't read that, that is available, um, to go through, and, um, this directs Oklahomans who are particularly vulnerable to the virus to shelter in their homes until April the thirtieth, excuse me, and that restricts their movements only for trips of, for essentials like groceries and medicine. Vulnerable populations are the elderly, the, and those immunocompromised or with pre-existing health conditions. The governor also closed all non-essential businesses in the counties with confirmed COVID-19 cases, and I believe that is at 19 counties right now. This includes gyms, salons, theaters, and museums. Gatherings of 10 or more are prohibited. I'd also like to draw your attention to some, uh, very important call to action, and that is related to a donation request to support our hospitals and nursing homes. On Friday, I sent a letter to our school leaders asking for their help with the desperate shortage of medical supplies. Uh, we asked them to donate based on information that the, uh, Hospital Association provided to us, uh, of areas of greatest need, which are any unused masks, eye protection, gloves, disinfectant wipes, and hand sanitizers, and that they are to provide those to their local nursing homes or hospitals. There is a desperate need for this, and it is, um, in many of our schools, uh, in closets, um, in various warehouse and supply, uh, areas that could be better used right now. We also want to talk about the waivers that we received at the federal level, and I have to, uh, thank and applaud the incredibly, um, responsive effort and, uh, work, hard work at the U.S. Department of Education. And also, I, I want to say how much it meant when U.S. Secretary Beth Duvall gave a phone call yesterday to connect with me and, uh, to ask personally if there is anything that they can do, and we had a, a list of a few things, and they are already working on providing what is needed in, in regard to some of these, um, federal dollars as well. But they were very swift in the response to our critical waiver submitted last Friday. The opening for submission was on Friday, we submitted that day, and we received approval that same evening, and that also, uh, occurred for at least 16 other states. ESU requires that each state administer academic assessments in English, language arts, mathematics, and science in grades three through eight, as well as ones in high school. So these assessments were suspended for the 2019-20 school year, which ensures some level of stability and flexibility in light of these extraordinary circumstances in which we find ourselves. The school report card, as a result, will not be able to be, uh, um, provided this year, that's the Oklahoma School Report Card, that is not the same as a individual student's report card. That actually will go forward, and we can address that a little bit, um, sooner, in, in just a little bit. Both assessments and the state's report card for schools are very important tools, but they, of course, do not outweigh the safety and health and well-being of our students, or their, the school staff and communities, uh, that we serve. I also want to talk a little bit about the meals that are needed during closure of schools. Um, you may be aware already that 61% of Oklahoma schoolchildren qualify for free and reduced-price lunch. Many Oklahomans depend on that nutritional meal, or in breakfast or lunch, at the school, and when the school is closed, they are going to be in greater need of, of keeping nutritional support going. So during this closure, we have worked with the U.S. Department of Agriculture to secu- to secure those national waivers that are needed to allow our schools to deliver grab-and-go curbside meals, uh, to also, uh, have the ability for a delivery of those meals on bus routes, uh, into neighborhoods, and we've also received approval to have a program called Meals to You, which allows for the, um, delivery of up to 10 meals to our students that are needing that a week at a time through the U.S. mail, and this will help in some of our remote areas and where, um, we may not be able to count on bus transportation to get that, or the curbside, uh, drive-through delivery of those. Uh, this is something that all states are working through, and we are just, um, incredibly blessed to have a team of child nutrition staff here at the department, and those that are working in local school districts who are working around the clock, literally around the clock. I think there was a call made and some, uh, guidance given, uh, close to midnight or after midnight in DC, um, with people in Oklahoma over the weekend on Saturday. So this has been truly just, uh, phenomenal work, and I applaud all of those who are helping make sure that they have new plans in local schools to continue these services. Let me tell you about another area, and one that will really be the, the focus of our board meeting. We have a group of people in the department that cut across all different offices, and they are led by Aaron Espelt of the State Department of Education, Executive Director of School Design and Innovation, and there is a host of tireless and dedicated members of OSDE staff who have been working to develop a distance learning framework, and this is what our districts are going to need as they are, uh, looking through their own plans, uh, as we deliver distance learning in a different way than they have even delivered for those 200-some school districts that already have virtual learning, that, that will look a little differently without some of that face-to-face interaction. So distance learning frameworks and resources that we anticipate will be on the agency's website at FDE.OK.gov by the end of the week. These are the, going to be the, the fruit of this labor. Um, it will be a lot of material, but we believe these resources and guidance will be of real value for our schools navigating through this period. And Oklahoma has tremendous educators, strong and dedicated and smart. We have faith and confidence that our districts and teachers are committed to creative and innovative ways to continue learning for their students, and they will rise to the challenge. It's going to look different for all schools, and we have to accept that. Many districts long to have, um, online tools and, uh, want to have resources to be able to hit the ground running, some have them and some do not. So this is now a area where we will provide more support at the state level, and we are asking for support at the federal level to free up the use of some of our existing federal funds to be used to support distance learning. Other districts have little connectivity and communities with little or no access to computer technology, but again, we're working at the state level with those providers to work to ensure as much connectivity as possible in the coming weeks. This is far from ideal, but these are extraordinary situation for us, and we have never experienced this before. Speaking of extraordinary, it's, it's the first time in history that we have had today, um, a virtual state Board of Education meeting. Uh, it's, it's emblematic of how we must adapt to the times to be able to continue to carry on the important work of education. Our education communities are tough, they're resilient, and they're committed. They know, as we all do, that we are all in this together. If this pandemic underscores anything, it is that we must help one another, we must care for one another, and we must love one another. And with that, we will begin considering what we can do at the state level to assist our schools in moving from a defensive posture, which was to take care of the safety of our children, our staff, and our communities by staying at home right now after spring break, after all that travel and this protective period of time, and also the nutrition, and keeping our children healthy and their well-being top of mind in that defensive work that we are engaged in currently. And then I'm asking that we now move into offense. Let's keep learning happening, and let's move and ask that question and, and then implement what that answer will be to, how do we keep our kids learning and growing? How do we continue? How do we make certain that we will not lose ground, that our children can keep momentum building? And this is what the next phase is about, beginning on April the 6th. All right, board members, um, I would like to turn your attention to item number two dash A, which is discussion and possible action on our minutes from our February 27th regular state board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion from Ms. Munnies.
Okay.
Okay.
And we have a second from, uh, Ms. Hernandez. All right, is there any comment or questions on this action item? All right, please call the roll.
Ms. Munnies.
Hi.
Mr. Boback.
I'm staying.
Ms. Bradley-Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Flanagan.
Aye.
Mr. Bolinbach.
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez.
Aye.
Superintendent Hofmeister.
Aye.
All right, thank you, that motion carries. All right, our next item is the discussion and possible action to amend the March 16th, 2020, Order of Mandatory Statewide Cessation of Operations for the Public Schools of Oklahoma due to the coronavirus COVID-19 global pandemic. Mr. Clark.
Superintendent, members of the board, um, as reflected on the agenda and, uh, just read by, by Superintendent Hofmeister, this item is to reconsider and possibly amend this board's March 16th, uh, 2020 order that, uh, mandatorily, uh, ordered the cessation of operations in the public schools, um, other provisions is provided therein. I believe that, um, with the superintendent's opening comments, um, it is appropriate to open this up and consider amending that March 16th order. Uh, you do have a recommendation, uh, before you this morning as to, uh, the recommended modification to that order, uh, but at this time, uh, would open it up for any discussion?
Yes, that's very important. Um, we would like to open that up for you to discuss, and, uh, those of you who I know have all been, uh, really wrestling with what is the right next step. Um, we do know we have executive order in place, which, uh, calls on all of us to observe the CDC guidance, uh, with no more than 10 gathering at a time, and, um, to implement social distancing as well, uh, which came, uh, as we were in the middle of preparing for today's board meeting, uh, as well as the governor's new executive order, but let's have a conversation about this, please.
First, I want to thank you and the State Department of Education because you have been very diligent in your leadership, and also, Mr. Clark has spent countless hours in organizing and keeping the board informed, uh, listening, as you as well, uh, have done. But being that this is a historic meeting that's being done online, and, uh, just minutes before beginning the meeting, there were some amendments, or not, the recommendation was amended slightly, uh, if you could read that, uh, recommendation in its entirety so that way the entire board and to everyone, uh, listening, uh, virtually could also understand what's in it.
Sure, uh, thank you, very much appreciate that. Uh, the recommendation before you at this time, uh, reads as follows, pursuant to the powers, authority, and duties vested by the Oklahoma Constitution and the State of Oklahoma. the State of Oklahoma, the Oklahoma State Board of Education hereby orders effective immediately the following. To spend in-person instruction and extracurricular activities in closed buildings for the remainder of the school year, recommended ending date on or after May 8 through the 15, 2020, for general student and personnel attendance. Exceptions authorized among public schools and their staff shall be those who are to provide nutrition services, essential core services. Examples include governance, H.R., billing, maintenance, and continuity of building functions. Staff to maintain building access control and security measures, as well as student enrollment functions. Additional authorizations include staff for the purposes of facilitating or supporting required delivery of distance learning as set forth in more detail below. Secondly, now through April 6, there's an established and dedicated window to do the following. Provide the Oklahoma State Department of Education with expedited waiver and assurances for each district, and prepare for and begin distance learning. Preparations may include immediately convening staff development consistent with the intent and purposes of this order. Third, in consideration of the waivers considered and potentially granted by the State Board of Education at this March 25, 2020, special meeting, districts will provide the following assurances through the 2019-20 school year. Again, recommended ending date on or after May 8 through the 15, 2020. Assurances include taking into account the needs and resources of each local community and the students' needs, develop and implement an approved distance learning plan. Districts who utilize the OSDE, State Department of Education's distance learning resources will be expedited for review. Districts electing not to use the State Department of Education's distance learning resources must develop a learning plan and submit the proposed framework to the State Department of Education for review and approval. Secondly, assurances include districts must complete and return the survey sent by the State Department of Education on March 24, 2020, assessing the technology capacity of their staff and community, and report the results back in the manner and timeframe determined by the State Department of Education. Third, districts must assure compliance with FERPA, the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, including assuring that they have read and understand the most recent fact sheets and guidelines provided by federal and state agencies. Districts adhere and comply with CDC guidelines and apply a health and safety policy that ensures students, staff, and families are not exposed to potential pathogens that could lead to illness. Next, districts will continue to enroll all new students according to the state statute and school district enrollment policies, and provide educational plans for students that are new to the district for the duration of the school year. Districts will comply with the requirements stipulated in executive orders from the Office of Governor of the State of Oklahoma. Turning to the awarding of credits, this is primarily a local function of school districts, but this board, as proposed, would encourage and recommend that districts utilize that flexibility so that students graduating in the class of 2020 or earlier, or who are on track to graduate before the gubernatorial declaration of emergency in March of 2020 and any subsequent amendments thereto, are not negatively impacted by measures taken by each local education agency or the state in response to the novel coronavirus, COVID-19. Consistent with the above, the state board will consider waivers and flexibilities that are on the agenda this morning at the March 25, 2020, special meeting, and to authorize the Oklahoma State Department of Education to grant these waivers for the duration of the school year as set forth above. Nothing in this order is intended to interfere with contracts between public schools and employees, and the staff of public schools are expected to carry out the terms and conditions of their contracts as entered into or later amended between the parties. In carrying out the terms of this order, the public schools shall adopt any policies or regulations necessary to comply with this order. And finally, this first amended order of the State Board of Education will be continuously monitored and updated accordingly.
Thank you. All right, so let's have any discussion about this. I think it's important to talk about what's here.
The one question that I have, and I'm so grateful you mentioned that you spoke with Secretary DeVos in regards to uniquely what's happening in Oklahoma, and we know that every state is dealing with it in vastly different ways. What was that conversation like? If you can give us a bit about her take, did you discuss school closures? The reason being, or building closures per se, because learning continues. In the U.S. Department of Education and their release and their fact sheet as of March 21, they specifically mentioned that they want to remind schools that they should opt not to close or decline to provide distance instruction, which we are, and that is what we're doing here. What was her take? Did you share with her the direction that this body wants to go in?
And that was exactly the conversation. It was, as we prepare for distance learning, what kind of support could we, could they provide, and what kind of help do we need? Of course, that is why we were given a waiver as well for the U.S. requirements on testing and accountability among many other states that are also taking very similar steps. I think that what is discouraged and being asked to reconsider would be if a school or a state were to call off class for the remainder of the school year where there would be no learning. That is a concern that certainly we would have as well. And actually, I think part of taking the steps now to be able to shift to distance learning makes the continuing of the school year possible. If we were to wait, and I have had a number of emails and phone calls and messages about, can't we wait a few weeks to decide if this is something that needs to be considered? The answer is no. We really can't. Districts can't stand up that kind of robust, meaningful program unless we take this time right now for them to engage in that so that there will be a meaningful number of weeks to deliver that service and provide that. It isn't possible for districts to flip a switch and shift into that kind of delivery of education without advance notice. And so we haven't given very much, but we've given enough because we are still deeper into the year than if we were two or three weeks down the road. And I just want to remind people, my thought on this is it's always better to plan and prepare now than in a crisis. And so this is how I believe we actually gain ground in education instead of lose ground when there could be a time of disarray, confusion, when whole blocks of workforce are prohibited from interacting, and the time to plan and make these provisions set and secure would be missed. But there was definitely support for the continuing of school and articulating that very specifically about the appreciation that we are committed to continuing the school year.
I think for me, all right, go ahead, someone on the phone.
Is that Mr. Flanagan?
Individual education plans under the federal, do all those plans need to be amended since we are now changing the requirements initially under those individual education plans?
That's a very good question, and we do have an answer for you. I'll let Brad, though, share that.
Sure. Sir, the answer is possibly. They are, as they say, they are individualized, and so there are very likely plans that may not need to be amended. And we know that there are plans that will definitely need to be amended, but that's an individual, case-by-case review that the school districts are prepared to engage in, and that is one of the assurances, again, that I read to you all earlier.
Also, on that line of thinking, we have received guidance from the U.S. Department of Education about how to ensure that IDEA is met under the constraints of the coronavirus. And this is something that we will be asking our districts to be sure they've reviewed and then give us that assurance that they will comply.
And they have to do that in order to get the approval for all of the waivers, right?
Yes, that's right. It's conditional for the waiver of other items that we will consider today.
I think for me personally, and I know I speak for the full board, we've all been in very close contact over the last several weeks. We're all here with the purpose of making sure that every student gets a quality of education, and this pandemic obviously presents incredibly trying times to make sure that that happens. I've been on multiple calls, not only with State Department of Education, but with school districts, talking about distance learning. I've seen my own kid's school trying to adapt. Last night, they both got videos from their teachers, which they loved, and I think we just want to continue to encourage, and I know school districts are thinking about this, but this period of time, and I too, and like all the other board members, I think have gotten a lot of feedback of like, why do we have to do this now? And my answer has been, we have to give districts the maximum amount of time to think through and innovate and think through how they can potentially reach every single one of their students. We all know that students are all very different, many of whom are on IEPs, many of whom have unique situations that need to be addressed during this time as well. And so giving districts the ability and time to think through how to reach every single student in their building and try to continue education as best as they can over the coming weeks, I think that we are giving districts the opportunity to try and deliver education to students in what is a very unprecedented time. So I definitely want to thank the State Department. I want to thank districts out there that are thinking differently. I want to encourage everybody, I mean, to get groups, not in person, but virtually groups of teachers together. I know there are a lot of really innovative teachers across our state to try something different and to try and reach as many students as they possibly can during this time. I know it'll be especially trying on the students. I've heard from a lot of students personally who are just devastated that they don't get to finish out the school year. And I know that that is really hard. I know that it's going to be incredibly hard on parents from all different walks of life, whether they're having to work from home or they're having to work outside the home and having to figure out how to educate their students at the same time. So I know the weight of this decision definitely does not go unnoticed by this board, but given the emphasis and need to protect our students and staff's health, I feel like that this is, we have to do what we can to move online and try and get education to students as best we can. So that is what we are here to do today.
Thank you. I appreciate how you are each describing the thought process and the struggle, recognizing the struggle. I know others virtually want to join in as well in this discussion.
So I, again, want to echo the sentiments of the other board members in just sharing great appreciation for the State Department, to you Superintendent Hoffmeister, for your leadership during this time. I think that as we talk about distance learning, it's really important that we acknowledge that distance learning does not mean that it's technology-based or online because that is an equity gap across our state. We know that we serve many students who do not have access, and so there is a unique burden on several of our districts to deliver services in a different way. I mean, they don't have necessarily the access at home to teach a student online, and teachers will be thinking through how to innovate in special ways, and I'm grateful for the waivers and the ways that we can support those districts. I also think that when we do return to normalcy in school, that there's additional barriers that those districts that were not able to have the close points of touch with students through technology might face as well. And so we'll continue to think about how to support those districts. But ultimately, during this time, as we're engaging in this conversation about distance learning, many people automatically assume that means online, but we're forgetting about our most vulnerable students who do not have that access. And so although this is a very difficult decision to make, health is the top priority. I also think that it calls on our community to support school districts and our State Department as we're delivering instruction in a very different way, unprecedented time, but we do have to think about the students who do not have access and the parents who might still be working and need those additional supports from the community however we can during this time as well.
Thank you. Thank you. And you've mentioned that it is not all computer-based, and that is accurate. In fact, we have a partnership with Oklahoma's public broadcasting affiliate, which is OETA, with 11 different towers all across the state that reach into homes where even cellular service is not provided or reaching. And we're talking with Polly Anderson, the Executive Director for OETA, as we would like her to look at how we could deliver educational support for our children through some of the resources that PBS has available, and we are grateful that they are working at OETA very hard to connect with our curriculum and instruction team here and looking at programming that is already grade-specific, subject and content-specific, and how that will connect with our Oklahoma academic standards and our curriculum framework. And there's discussion about helping to place that onto daytime programming so that our teachers have that as yet another tool. Other board members?
I would just like to let everyone know, a lot of people have probably reached out to all of us during this time, from administrators to parents, business owners, legislators, and this decision is not made without taking into consideration everyone's two cents on this. Healthcare experts have reached out, so I want everyone out there to understand that your voice is being heard. And so I appreciate people reaching out to us and giving us their thought, giving us their expertise, or just their feelings and emotions in a, what is nothing less than a strange time. So as we move forward with this, I just want everyone to know that we've heard their voices.
Thank you. Certainly, thank you.
One of the other comments I would like to make in regards to those individuals who have reached out and who have been diligent in expressing their concerns is the reading that Mr. Clark did really goes into the flexibility and taking into consideration those graduating students for the class of 2020, and this that we will be voting on takes into account that we're giving them the flexibility and the districts the flexibility to be able to decide how that will look like. So it's not to where we're shutting things down and not giving that hope that those four years that they have spent in pouring out all that they are, that it will be acknowledged and that we will find- that it will be acknowledged and that we will find creative ways to make sure that that is acknowledged. And also that this can also be amended. And that is the concern that they have, that we are going to, by closing buildings, that we are now essentially shutting out their hard work and acknowledging of that. The second and last comment that I want to point out is that there are schools in the state of Oklahoma who are set up for such as times as this in education that they are not disrupted during a crisis like a pandemic as this. And that's a few of our virtual schools, charter schools. And I want to acknowledge them and also in noticing that as of April 6th, in this order, once they submit that assurance document, they're able to start immediately. So that's the way I understand it. And Mr. Clark and Superintendent Hofmeister, please correct me if I'm wrong. I want to make sure that they know that this will not put any additional barriers to them starting immediately.
Thank you. And you're correct. We don't want to hold up the education of any of our students. And we know that some are ready to go right now and others are not. We want to afford the time that's needed in others that are working to develop that. But you have raised a good point. The last thing we want to do is stall the ability to have education continue for students. And they shouldn't have to wait. I would like to mention something about graduation ceremonies. And I am already hearing some really creative ways of celebrating. And I know we will have many other stories like this. But I do think it's worth noting, one superintendent mentioned that they're considering having a virtual graduation ceremony, and this is a very large school district, that would celebrate online, where people could watch this live streaming from anywhere in the country. Those vulnerable family members that certainly would not be traveling would be able to participate and watch at the same time, where each senior would be given that their name called with their senior picture displayed and that they would give honor to each one of them and even have a time to deliver the message from the valedictorian. Other elements of a graduation ceremony that we have come to hold really dear could be included. Of course, it's going to be different. But we can find creative ways to honor that work and that accomplishment that our students have achieved. Also, I heard a school that is a part of rural Oklahoma with a Main Street. And they said that they are going to do, or are considering doing, a parade of cars with each of the graduates in their own vehicle with celebrating through Main Street for all of their graduates. There are ways that we can continue to honor students. It is going to be different, and we recognize that. And there's just not a way around that right now. But it is a time where I think we will continue to be inspired by the creativity of those who seek to connect with our kids and honor the accomplishment and work of many years.
Superintendent, can you talk about any conversations that you've had with the Department of Human Services as far as potentially leaving students who see school as a refuge from difficult home situations? What is the department doing with the Department of Human Services to try to mitigate any of those situations as much as possible during this time?
I'm really glad you brought that up. It is on our hearts as well and part of our thinking and planning. We are in conversation and have been a part of meetings with DHS. And it is a very real theme that school is the safe place for many of our kids. And what I would like to say here is, just like when, you know, I heard another superintendent remind me that growing up in Oklahoma, and I've had the same conversation myself with my parents when I was young. Just like church is not the building, it's the people that are a part of that. School is not the building either. It is the people, the connection between students and their teachers and those who support them, those who are preparing the meals and delivering the meals, and those who are leading in those decisions. That is school. That is the delivery of education. And we want those connections to happen right away. So this is part of that. But you have identified an area that we do want to keep our, all those who have some type of virtual connection with our students, whether it's phone calls or through some kind of digital, online, or Zoom, or meeting, or Google Classroom, that they keep in mind that we still have obligations to keep kids safe. And we have included in our distance learning framework a mental health component that reminds our teachers and our school administrators about how to talk about the COVID-19 pandemic, to look for signs of stress. And we know that that is real among adults, and it's going to be real for children, too. So that is part of our distance learning framework. And we recognize this is where we need the whole community to continue to support our kids. So thank you for bringing that up.
And I think just, you know, furthering that, as far as, you know, there's a lot of discussion about teachers and kind of helping teachers figuring out how to do some of this distance learning. I think also helping our counselors, you know, connect to our students and continuing that as much as we can, I think will be really important during this time.
Yes. And we have a group of counselors that are working with counselors. In fact, later this week, I believe, it is on Friday, we have our counselor advisory group where we're going to be meeting virtually to discuss this and a host of other things as we prepare for our kids in their senior class that are on track for graduation, to be able to have a smooth transition into their post-secondary pursuits, whether that be the military or Career Tech certification completion or into higher education. And those opportunities need to be a seamless transition, and we're committed to still providing that. Grades are an issue. How that impacts Oklahoma's promise, the student's GPA. These are all parts of the information we'll be sharing with districts. We're not going to rush that. It has to be done when it's done. And we have set for ourselves also the deadline of April 6th. However, many of this work that I'm discussing now will be ready before then.
I have a question, Joy.
Mr. Bobak?
Yes, thank you. Point of clarity, Brad, on the comments in regards to honor before May 8 through the 15th. Kind of expound on that. I was thinking that the last day of school originally was set for like the 22nd.
Thank you, sir. Actually, each of those determinations is a local determination, year over year, between each school district and their Board of Education. In this instance, in the circumstances, as we've continued conversations early on into the late evening hours and then this morning, I believe districts are best set with a firm, narrow timeframe of here is the recommended timeframe from the state of Oklahoma, this body, as to the end of the year. That way, they can start building these individual district plans accordingly. And so that was the guidance that we received. But generally speaking, the school calendars are district by district.
Also, I think it's important to mention, just to kind of expand on that input for your benefit, just to know, we have been holding meetings, virtual meetings with, and telephone conferences with our superintendent advisory group. We had one on Sunday afternoon. We also have had basically every other day, a very large call. The last one that we had was with our school and, well, district leaders with 1,178 participants. And they are sharing questions, ideas. We are keeping them alerted to decisions that could be coming so that they could have advanced time to begin thinking. While I say the word advance, we're talking about only a matter of days or weeks. But it is still what is needed. And in those conversations, we have heard from our district leaders that they would appreciate a date or a range of window for the closure of the school year in terms of the instruction component so that they can shift their work to any kind of summer school support that needs to be in place as well through a different model, if that's warranted. And then also work to prepare all of their personnel through virtual meetings with some of the professional development and support that has been interrupted because of the closure that we have had right now with a fixed time where districts were asked to stay home and their personnel to stay home. So we want to provide districts with what they need. And Mr. Clark mentioned how it is very important for them to take that date and back all of that up to where we are today. And they know what they need to cover. And it allows them then to all be working in unison and learning from one another at the very same time. And we'll be able to support them more together. This also makes it very clear that we do not expect a district to simply say, well, this is too much for us to consider and we're going to simply say we are done. That's unacceptable. We are here to help and we are here to identify needs, identify hurdles, and get past those. But we are here to also advocate for our kids' continuous learning and that that needs to continue and we'll get through these barriers.
Just quickly, if I can add one point, Mr. Bobak unintentionally omitted a minute ago. Nothing in what is recommended or proposed prohibits a district. Each district can determine, as they deem necessary, to continue beyond that recommended date. So I did want to emphasize that this is a recommendation and nothing would prohibit, as deemed necessary, for each district to continue beyond that.
And I was going to add to that. That was my understanding. But also to say, you know, I've heard of some districts looking at, we know that this will potentially put some students behind, especially students who started behind. And so looking at districts being able to continue their continuous learning plan through the summer, if that is something that that district chooses to do, this gives them the ability to do that. So there's no hard stop as far as when this has to stop and start, was my understanding.
Completely agree. And even to bolster that point you've made just now, the portion that I read about awarding of credits. Recall that I read the portion about not negatively impacting students as a result of these circumstances we were in. So I think, to your point, that should also be taken into consideration locally.
Other comments?
Well, I just wanted to thank you both for those explanations. And to echo what my colleagues have said, obviously, this is not an easy choice. Everybody has spent a lot of time getting through this. I do want to thank Joy and Brad for all the many countless hours I know you and your team have put in. But, you know, Joy, kind of to what you said earlier, it's times like this where we see resilience and people rise up and communities rise up and overcome. And so I'm expecting that that will be what we will see here in our state. And at the end of the day, I feel like this is the best choice for the students and family long-term. So thanks again.
Superintendent, can you talk about, you know, I know there have been a lot of education vendors opening up their platforms for free to parents and schools. What kind of resources are you hearing about? And how will that be communicated from the State Department to districts, to parents, as far as resources that are available to help them kind of bridge that gap between, you know, even, you know, options that aren't online?
That's a very good point. Some of those will be provided as tools that we have vetted that can be reviewed for districts in the distance learning framework. But also, there are already contracts that are available statewide for districts to participate in. And there are, some of these existing contracts are related to, the statewide virtual charter school board has supplemental materials that a district can tie into if they would like in their traditional school lesson planning and delivery. And we know that there are already some of our districts that are participating in that. So it is, you're correct. There's, right now, I would say we're probably being inundated with a lot of tools and offers for help. And, boy, we sure do appreciate knowing about those things. We will try to give our districts some guidance through that. Here's what's available now when it comes to tools to use, platforms that they could use. But I want you to also know that we are working with the governor's secretaries, Secretary Ostrow, who is looking at this digital connectivity piece. We also are working with Secretary of State and Secretary of Education, Michael Rogers. And he has brought these teams together with Career Tech and Higher Education, OneNet, other resources that the state is already in large contracts that we have also, in some ways, can leverage buying power. But we also know that there's going to be some relief, federal relief, coming as well for some of these purposes. So all of that is being considered right now. And we have a survey to districts that will ask questions and is due back on Friday at 9:00 a.m. And that survey will not take that long to complete. But it is asking for a very broad overview of what do you have now, what do you need, what would you do if you had the computers? What would you do if you had the hotspots for mobile device connection? And what do you need and where are those gaps? So that we can begin looking at a longer view of getting those things ready. I think it's important to look at what is happening in Oklahoma compared to the trends, the mathematical models we're looking at right now compared to the other states and other countries that are a few weeks ahead of us with COVID-19 and the disruption and the need for securing people in place and reducing the connection between people physically. And what we learned there is that this is not likely to be short-term. But I do want people to remember, it is temporary. It isn't permanent. And in that, it is also 100% worth the struggle that schools and families will go through to keep our families safe and our communities safe and to try to reduce community transmission of the virus. If we do that, we will be able to handle that in hospitals as people will become sick and not have an overwhelmed situation where those who could have been treated and survived may not if we overwhelm the hospitals by not taking these very drastic steps right now. But it is in that spirit, we have to remember. It is temporary. Looking at this, though, it could be something that we revisit. And this board will have to stay vigilant to watch and learn from what the data tells us. And it is very likely that we will be continuing conversations about, what does it look like for summer learning? What does education in Oklahoma look like in the fall? And we have to think in some ways that the steps we are taking right now may be a dry run for what may come in this temporary time of extraordinary delivery of education. But if we are fortunate and if it is possible to come back to ordinary school delivery of face-to-face instruction, of face-to-face instruction, we will have gained a lot through this. And what we will have gained is access to online learning for more kids than we had at this date. We will be able to modernize some of what our schools have wanted for a long time to deliver individualized learning, to be able to have more of a blended model. So I think we come through this certainly stronger, but also better prepared to meet the needs of our kids going forward.
And that's one thing that stood out to me, and this number might not be correct, so correct me if I'm wrong, but knowing that over, I believe, over 200 school districts in Oklahoma have some form of virtual offering now for some students. So I think that that's very encouraging as we kind of move forward to know that some districts, a lot of districts in our state are already doing this in some way. I agree with Carlesha that this will also highlight a lot of the inequities, especially on the digital connectedness side and kind of, I think, will force our state and other states to look at, what do we need to do to expand and make sure that students across our state have access to broadband internet and make sure that they have, you know, equal access to online offerings from an educational standpoint? And so, you know, I agree that if there is a silver lining in any of this, it will force conversations of how does education need to look different and how can we make sure that every kid in Oklahoma has the ability to access the same quality education as every other student in the state? So I think those are going to be ongoing discussions as we kind of come out of this.
Thank you. I agree with you. And I see heads nodding here.
Definitely appreciate you bringing that up, Jennifer, in regards to the fact that there are many districts where students have already begun blended learning. I also think just during this time that even greater deepens those gaps of students and their access right now. And so keeping that at the forefront of the silver lining of how do we come out of this and ensure that that access is afforded to our most vulnerable students, but also when knowing that that gap exists right now, what are we going to do about that as a board, as a State Department, as a community, as districts to ensure that we can serve the students in the best way that we can during this time?
Board members, I also want you to be aware that there are other supports available to support our school leaders and our teachers. Right now, we have another program that we have had in the works called Project Echo, which is part of the telemedicine delivery of consultation and work among colleagues around a particular issue of importance. And we have three lines in Project Echo. They are all now devoted to COVID-19 and working through these hurdles and barriers in partnership with OSU Medical Center. And so we are an OSU College of Education as well. So we are working to help support in very, very real ways, but also in that arena of conversation around problem solving. And we have this mechanism called Project Echo, which is part of, for us, TeleEd. And we then connect with those decision makers to walk through a struggle and learn from that collectively across the state. So that will continue. And if people are unaware of that and want to be a part of that, I understand we had hundreds that were a part of that this week. So we will continue to get the word out on that. One other thing to mention, I do think it's worth mentioning here that I have a great concern for our healthcare providers and the childcare that they need for their students that are in school. And this is something other states have wrestled with. We have seen that addressed in different ways. This is something that Oklahoma began a discussion about in some of the very first early meetings that we had with agency heads. And while we're not able right at this moment to share out what that plan would be, it is top of mind as well. We know that our healthcare providers are giving every ounce of energy all day long and extra-long shifts. And they are doing this in, again, historically significant conditions that are desperately in need of their hand wipes and gowns and gloves and all sorts of personal protection equipment that they are needing right now in this moment. So we do want to get the message that this is still something to work through for them, but we are committed to finding support. All right. Any other board member that has a comment or something to consider before we consider action? All right. All right, then, I would ask, oh, Carlesha.
Oh, I was just going to make the motion if we were ready.
All right. Yes.
I move that we approve the recommended order for school closure for the remainder of the school year.
My second motion.
All right. And any further discussion? We will have this order available very shortly for everyone to be able to see. And just a reminder that this order is the beginning of distance learning statewide so that learning can continue. All right. Let's call the motion.
Ms. Hernandez.
Call the roll, excuse me.
Aye.
Mr. Bowlenbach?
Aye.
Ms. Bradley Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Boebek?
Aye.
Ms. Munn?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you very much, board members, for that work. But we have more work to do. And this is important business that we would like to entertain at this time to provide additional relief to schools as we deliver education in a different way. Mr. Clark, item three, and we're on item 3A.
All right, thank you, Superintendent. Board members, continuing this next phase of the agenda, phase two, if you will. Again, the board's authority and the constitution of the state of Oklahoma, the statutes authorize the granting of the waivers and deregulations, step forth on the agenda. I believe each item merits discussion. And so if it's okay with you, I would take a moment to go through each one of these items one by one and request action on each individual item.
And also, I believe there are going to be some items that we're going to ask that you pull off the agenda or table?
Correct.
And as we go through them, then if you would provide an explanation for that reasoning?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So starting with the first, the school calendar, ability to maintain less than a full term. Oklahoma statute generally requires that schools be in session and classroom instruction be offered for 180 days or 1,080 hours. This may be waived if conditions beyond the control of local authorities warrant that waiver. I believe that in the circumstances that we are in, as discussed earlier, we would recommend this waiver be granted.
Do you want us to entertain a motion for each separately?
Yes.
Okay. And just on that one really quickly, I think, just emphasizing, and I know districts are doing this as far as, you know, obviously, I know that this is the waiver that's needed, especially from physical presence, but, you know, encourage districts to continue to meet for the school year and continue learning through the school year will be hugely important to make sure that students don't fall behind during this time.
Yes.
I'll move to approve that waiver.
Second.
Mr. Flanagan, second. Okay, any discussion? Thank you. Please call the roll.
Ms. Munn?
Aye.
Mr. Boebek?
Aye.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Bowlenbach?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Next item.
Moving to, sorry, flexibility on the use of textbook funds. Pursuant to statute, school districts may individually apply to the State Board of Education for a waiver to authorize flexibility in the use of their state-appropriated textbook funding. If approved, each district may expend these monies allocated for any purpose related to the support and maintenance of the school district as determined by the local board. At this time, I believe the recommendation is a uniform waiver to districts and the flexibility in the use of these textbook funds, flexibility to use these funds for the support, but not for the maintenance of facilities of each school district. Would make that recommendation at this time.
Yes.
And just, I promise I won't ask a question about everyone, but this will allow, just to, you know, emphasize, this will allow them, if they want to buy, you know, kind of online software or anything in regard to kind of doing digital learning, this will allow them to use those textbook dollars for that.
That is correct.
Thank you for highlighting that. Is there a motion? All right, Ms. Munn made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Carlesha Williams Bradley, second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Bowlenbach?
Aye.
Ms. Bradley Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Boebek?
Aye.
Ms. Munn?
Aye.
Superintendent.
Aye. All right, that motion carries. And now we come to one that we will consider tabling.
That is correct. It would be the recommendation to table this item at this time. It's on the agenda, however, we have given, provided guidance to districts on the convening of the reading teams that are set forth.
For those who might not be looking at an agenda, this is related to the Reading Sufficiency Act. And, excuse me, thank you.
No, thanks, Superintendent. The second piece is about flexibility on the use of funding. We have already provided guidance on that. At this time, we would recommend just tabling the item, believing that we have given the guidance at this time that we can.
Can you talk about for students that were potentially at risk of falling into the category of not being able to advance to the next school year? We talked earlier, but just to clarify for everybody listening at home, is it possible for reading teams to still meet virtually and kind of talk about specific reading plans for individual students? And is that, you know, kind of being encouraged from the department?
Precisely, yes. And appreciate the plug for the FAQs and the guidance that we've put out.
That's right. And that's expected. This is, the Reading Sufficiency Act is still in place. We expect our schools to rely on the information that they have about where their children are, particularly those in the kindergarten, first, second, and third grades, related to reading proficiency and grade level preparedness for being on track for third-grade reading. What this also allows is for, again, the kind of work that has been permitted even before a global pandemic, which is for our schools to meet virtually, though, and to conduct the business around decisions for the right steps for a child after this grade level. And that's something that needs to be made with family and the teacher who knows them best and those that are outlined in that group that make this decision locally. But we do have guidance that will help. And we believe that all the flexibility is already in place at this time.
I just wanted to make sure that by tabling this, we aren't saying that the Reading Sufficiency Act still is not in place.
Right. Very good. We see no need for a waiver right now because of the steps we've already taken.
Continue on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next item is on the reading assessment for a driver's license or permit. Generally speaking, Oklahoma statutes require that students demonstrate two things. One, that they are enrolled in a public school, for our purposes, a public school. And then secondarily, that they have been administered, taken the eighth-grade reading assessment. I believe the recommendation at this time is to table that for a couple of reasons. In conversations with the Department of Public Safety, we believe that there's a solution in place that does not make this waiver appropriate or necessary at this time. The second reason, Lori Murphy will get into a rule later this morning on the agenda, an emergency rule that would authorize the granting of a medical exemption from those assessments, including the reading assessment that I just required, which would then be facilitated to DPS and distributed to their sites. So at this time, the recommendation is to table this item.
So just for clarification purposes, eighth graders will still be able to get their learning permit under, you know, without needing a waiver based on the guidelines that you and DPS have been working on?
That is correct. Superintendent, board members, proceed to item five. This is the school district audit acknowledgements. Just to give an overview, Oklahoma law requires that each school district have an annual audit. This audit must be presented to the school board and a form, the audit acknowledgement form, must be accompanying the submission to the State Department of Education. Believe that these audits are either completed or substantially close to being completed. Districts who have in excess of $750,000 of certain funding must submit the audit form to the department by March 31st. And then if less than the $750,000, the date is April 30th. We believe at this time, and the recommendation is to waive the required form and proceed with submitting the audit so that that is not held up in the circumstances and times that we are in.
Okay.
Recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Ms. Munn?
Aye.
Mr. Boebek?
Aye.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Bowlenbach?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Superintendent.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, item 3A6.
3A6. Relating to the instructional day of six hours as set forth in section 1-111 of Title 70, that requires that the school day consists of not less than six hours devoted to school activities. Given the conversation in item two and continuing with some of the waivers we were talking about a moment ago on the school calendar, it seems appropriate at this time to recommend that we provide the flexibility to school districts. Recommend approval of this item.
So moved. Okay, now, any discussion there? All right. Thank you. Please, do we have a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Bowlenbach?
Aye.
Ms. Bradley Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Boebek?
Aye.
Ms. Munn?
Aye.
Superintendent.
Aye. All right, that motion carries. Thank you.
And proceeding along, item seven is related to the general fund balance penalties and the waiver requests that are associated with them. Board members, in statute, there are certain amounts, certain allowances that are provided for in the statutes that district general fund balances cannot exceed. And if they do exceed those numbers for two consecutive years, there is a penalty in statute that is to be imposed by April 1. This is on a sliding scale based on the prior year's general fund balance. And general funds, generally speaking, is the operational fund account for a school. Statutes authorize districts to appeal to the State Board of Education. This is a matter of ordinary business. This is a matter of ordinary business that would come to the board. We do have in front of you the districts who submitted the appeals in a timely manner. Those districts, I'll just read them aloud for everyone participating, Burlington, Cherokee, Timberlake, Sayre, Banner, Calumet, Sealing, Taloga, Deer Creek, Lamont, O'Carchie, Alley and Cleo, Cho Tomasi, Frontier, Kiowa, Braden, Cheyenne, Hammond, Alva, and Fort Supply. We would recommend approval of this item at this time.
To be clear, is it asking, it's giving all districts?
Our recommendation.
Versus, or just those?
Is the districts who timely submitted an appeal, the ones that I just identified, to grant those waivers. The others would not have submitted, or either, they could have accepted the penalty for their own reasons.
Okay.
But our recommendation is to approve those who requested in a timely manner.
So moved. All right, we have a motion, Mr. Boebek, and is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All right. Please call the roll.
Ms. Money?
Aye.
Mr. Boebek?
Aye.
Mr. Flanigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley Williams? Mr. Bowlenbach?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Superintendent Hallmark.
Aye. Thank you, that motion carries. Item 3A8.
And this is the final item that we would request tabling this morning. And if there are questions or discussion, I'm happy to explain, but if not, continue proceeding along.
Thank you.
Item nine are the cooperative agreements for alternative education programs. Board members, I believe this item will be familiar to you. Statutes require that any district serving fewer than 10 students shall enter into a cooperative agreement with another school district. Again, given the conversation this morning, CDC guidelines, it seems very appropriate to waive this requirement in statute at this time.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Thank you, please call the roll.
Ms. Money?
Aye.
Mr. Boebek?
Aye.
Mr. Flanigan? Ms. Bradley Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Bowlenbach?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Superintendent Hallmark.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, board members, item 10, library media services. This is one that is, again, probably familiar to you on prior agendas. Generally, these requirements are certain staffing numbers per student set forth in a rule. Again, given the conversation earlier, where we are, would recommend approval to free up districts and afford the flexibility here.
Is there a motion? So moved. A second?
Second.
Mr. Flanigan has the second. Thank you, please call the roll.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Bowlenbach?
Aye.
Ms. Bradley Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Flanigan?
Yes.
Mr. Boebek?
Aye.
Ms. Money?
Aye.
Superintendent Hallmark.
Aye. All right, thank you, that motion carries.
Superintendent, board members, next item relates to teacher leader effectiveness and the statutes that correspond to that. The statutes that I'm referring to generally require that each district board of education adopt a policy and annually review that policy for the evaluation of professional staff. Teachers are to be evaluated consistent with the provisions of the statutes and the local policy. I believe it's reasonable at this point, the circumstances we are in, this is a proactive movement all around to distance learning. And this waiver request, the same thing, to free up districts to be able to serve the students and the methods and the resources that they have and not adhere to the rubrics that quite likely will not align to this distance learning that we are talking about today.
The only thing that I would say there, I agree for the need for the waiver, but I would hope that school leaders would continue to audit the, you know, continuous learning opportunities. And I know that there will be groups of teachers that are, you know, especially mentor teachers, a lot of what happens with TLE is, you know, making sure that some of the newer teachers have mentor teachers. And I hope that that work will continue online and kind of virtually among teachers and school leaders in their building to make sure that especially newer teachers are still getting the support that they need from more veteran teachers and kind of their school leaders within their school building.
I'll move approve. All right. And a second.
Second.
And a second, Ms. Hernandez. Any further discussions? Thank you, please call the roll.
Ms. Money?
Aye.
Mr. Boebek?
Aye.
Mr. Flanigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Bowlenbach?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Superintendent Hallmark.
Aye, motion carries.
All right, Superintendent, board members, these next two items, both in statute and in different locations, but both relate to graduation requirements. The first relates to CPR requirements that must be offered and completed before a student graduates. The second relates to physical education requirements that are set out in detail in the statutes. Again, sorry to harp on this, but given the conversation from earlier, where we are with distance learning, of course, some of this may be possible, but this is another attempt to encourage flexibility and to ease minds of the professional staff in schools. We would encourage the relaxation, deregulation of CPR requirements first.
So moved. Thank you, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, very good, thank you. Please call the roll.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Bowlenbach?
Mr. Bowlenbach?
Aye.
Ms. Bradley Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Flanigan?
Yes.
Mr. Boebek?
Aye.
Ms. Money?
Aye.
Superintendent Hallmark.
Aye, all right, thank you, that motion carries. Next is physical education, item 13. So moved. Second, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, please call the roll.
Ms. Money?
Aye.
Mr. Boebek?
Aye.
Mr. Flanigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Bowlenbach?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Superintendent Hallmark.
Aye, thank you, motion carries. Item 14, abbreviated school day, and this is related to alternative education.
Thank you, Superintendent, statutes authorize the State Board of Education to define the length of a school day for alternative education programs. The body has done that, setting that at 756 hours at a minimum. Going back to what I keep saying, if the waivers granted earlier on about the school calendar, the minimum length of the instructional day, it is appropriate and recommended to waive this requirement as well.
So moved. Is there a second?
That's second.
All right, motion and a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Bowlenbach?
Aye.
Ms. Bradley Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Flanigan?
Yes.
Mr. Boebek?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Superintendent Hallmark.
Aye, all right, that motion carries. Item 15.
Board members, section 6-187, 187 of the Oklahoma statutes authorizes this body to grant emergency certifications to individuals. I believe we have 30 requests that were timely submitted before you, would recommend approval at this time. And then also, later on the agenda, Ms. Murphy will talk through and present a proposed emergency certification rule. So further discussion coming on this topic, but at this time, the recommendation is to grant those 30.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Bo, Mr. Boebek has a second, we have a motion already, and now, please call the roll.
Ms. Money?
Aye.
Mr. Boebek?
Aye.
Mr. Flanigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Bowlenbach?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Superintendent Hallmark.
Aye, thank you, that motion carries as well. Item 16, school district and site, school site accreditation recommendation.
Thanks, Superintendent, this body issues accreditation over the public schools in the state of Oklahoma. At this time, we would recommend pausing those reviews onsite, compliance visits, with the caveat, the recommendation would include that should a situation present itself and it become necessary, that this body could reopen, reexamine, and modify that recommendation.
Can I ask a question about, so the regional accreditation officers, are they still going to be in touch with schools?
Oh, yeah.
And kind of ensuring that even though site visits, you know, during this time are not allowed, can you kind of talk through what that might look like from an accreditation standpoint to make sure that school districts are still adhering to as much as they can?
Yes.
Yeah, I think you said it very well. The REOs, the regional accreditation officers, have continuous contact with school districts, the leaders in schools, and that will continue. But I think it's fair to say, rather than focusing on when the accreditation officer is going to be onsite and when this paperwork, for example, has to be submitted, like the audit acknowledgement form, for example, we would recommend shifting the attention to the distance learning that we've been talking about this morning and that to the maximum extent that this body would authorize, focus on that and not necessarily on those visits and onsite reviews.
I definitely.
At the same time.
All right, go ahead.
No, I was saying, I appreciate this waiver, just in thinking about the shift from compliance to serving our students the best we can during this time, even if the REOs could switch gears and thinking about how they're getting information back to the OSD about additional supports that school sites or district leaders need during this time versus the regular checkpoints of paperwork that don't always relate to the tangible needs that exist in this moment of crisis. So I definitely appreciate this waiver being included.
Thank you. So moved.
School districts that are under review right now that should not carry with this waiver any actions today, or do we, I guess that's the question, my question is, do we have any school districts that are currently under review for this matter that we have us concerned about?
At this time, Mr. Flanigan, I believe the recommendation is to continue with the uniform pause on accreditation onsite compliance reviews. And the reason that I mentioned for that slight caveat that this body could reopen, modify, amend this action is, to your point exactly, if a situation presents itself, that we could reopen that on a case-by-case basis as necessary, but at this time, I don't have any that we are recommending to carve out of that.
Thanks.
All right, we have a motion and a second, I believe, do we? No, we need a second.
Second.
Second. All right, thank you, please call the roll.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Bowlenbach?
Aye.
Ms. Bradley Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Flanigan?
Yes.
Mr. Boebek?
Aye.
Ms. Money?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, motion carries. Item 17.
Okay, Superintendent, board members wrapping up here, item 17 relates to the time period in which to calculate certified and legal average daily attendance. The statutes that are cited on the agenda generally state that the legal and certified average daily attendance is the average number of students present in a school district during a given school year, or as that year is otherwise specified by this body. Knowing that from March 12th forward, the attendance situation, particularly as we move to, from the board's order on March 16th into the distance learning, that is going to vary greatly. We have that realization and would suggest, for stability purposes, that we reset that time period for legal and certified average daily attendance at March 12th as the ending point.
So it would go from the start of the school year to March 12th, and the average daily attendance across that time period is what the ADA would be for the year?
That is correct.
So moved. Thank you, is there a second? We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All right, please call the roll.
Ms. Money?
Aye.
Mr. Boebek?
Aye.
Mr. Flanigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Bowlenbach?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
Superintendent Hallmark.
Aye, all right, that motion carries. And one final, under this section 3A, number 18.
Thank you. Similar to the previous item, that same section of statute defines average daily membership. So in the earlier item, we were talking about average daily attendance. This item relates to average daily membership. That is defined as the average number of students present in a school district during a school year. There are provisions that require a district to take a student off of the roster. Again, knowing where we are from March 16th forward, with the authorizations that we've been discussing, authorizing this morning, again, for stability, it makes sense, and the recommendation is to set that from the beginning of the school year through March 12th, Thursday, March 12th, I believe.
All right.
Mr. Clark, can you talk about, obviously, whenever we're talking about ADA and ADAs, we're talking about school funding?
Yes.
Does this, just to be clear for everyone watching at home, this essentially allows funding to continue at the levels based on the attendance from the start of the school year to March 12th. So this should not impact school funding for any schools across Oklahoma?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So moved. Thank you, there is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second. All right, thank you, please call the roll.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Bowlenbach?
Aye.
Ms. Bradley Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Flanigan?
Mr. Boebek? Aye.
Money?
Aye.
Aye, all right, that motion carries, thank you. And now, if you'll turn your attention to the next page, and we have item 3B, which we're asking Assistant General Counsel Lori Murphy to present discussion and possible action on the adoption of the following emergency rules pursuant to the Oklahoma Administrative Procedures Act. Ms. Murphy?
Good morning, honorable members of the board here at home. You have three emergency rules to consider today and then four regular rules. I would recommend one vote for each, probably one vote for emergency and one vote for school.
All right.
So to take you through the emergency measures, and these are, again, based on all of the emergency situations we've been discussing this morning. The first recommended rule change is an amendment to section 210, 101323. This is the rule on emergency exemptions from the Oklahoma School Testing Program. This is the rule on emergency exemptions from the Oklahoma School Testing Program. And this is an existing rule on emergency medical exemptions being available to students who meet the criteria and that are not included in OSDP assessment. So what this proposed amendment provides is that if an emergency that impacts public school operations is declared by a federal or state entity, including this board, then the State Department of Education is authorized to approve medical exemptions for any students who are affected by that emergency. But then it further provides that if a state of emergency suspends or interrupts school operations during the testing window itself, then the State Department would be authorized to issue a blanket medical exemption to all students affected. And what that would mean is if, for instance, you can't attend school because your school is closed down due to a public health emergency, then that would give OSDE the authority to give a blanket exemption from those OSDP assessments. So any questions on that rule?
Just to be clear, this emergency rule is kind of bolstered by the federal waiver that we received from testing.
It is. And many of these emergency provisions are interrelated with and dependent on those emergencies.
So they are federal laws, but they're also in state law?
Okay.
We have a very similar emergency adoption. And this is technically a new rule, but this will be familiar because you adopted a permanent version of this in the fall, but because that is still under consideration by the legislature, this needs to be an emergency adoption. Some of this content will be familiar. This is a rule that the board adopted last fall called determination of the chronic absenteeism indicator. And so what that rule provides is shifting authority, if you remember, to local school districts to grant medical exemptions from chronic absenteeism. So what this emergency provision would provide is that again, in case of a declared emergency by a federal or state government entity that impacts schools, the Oklahoma School Accountability System is authorized to make any appropriate accommodations that are authorized by federal law. And so specifically, the rule provides that student absences related to a state of emergency shall not be included in the calculation of the chronic absenteeism indicator. And to further back that up, there's an emergency statement that if there's any period of time during a state of emergency when public school operations are suspended, then that time period will be excluded from the chronic absenteeism calculations. In much the same way as ADA and ADM, the waiver that we had just discussed would have cut off at a certain date.
So when looking at the chronic absenteeism indicator moving forward, assuming we resume normal operations in the fall, would it be that same time period from the start of school to March 12th? That would be the consideration for chronic absenteeism?
Yes, where for this school year. However, while those calculations may be made, I believe federal waivers in play will have more of an effect than this on this year's determination.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions about either of these first two emergencies? Your final emergency rule consideration is an amendment to section 210-2994. This is period of validity of certificates. So this is the rule that lays out the validity period of every type of certificate, standard emergency. And what the emergency provisions here provide is that the state board would be authorized to issue an emergency certificate for a third year rather than the current limit of two total years per individual if a district board of education makes a recommendation that someone should receive that for a third year and meets the criteria. And this again is in part to respond to the current emergency scenario that we have and the circumstances that may put districts in. So the criteria that would have to be met include that the individual has a rating of effective or higher on their last TLE evaluation, that the employing school district submits a portfolio of their work, including their progress towards standard certification, and that the school district submits evidence of their attempts to hire a teacher who holds a standard certificate. So the same showings that must be made to initially receive an emergency certificate, plus essentially evidence that their performance has been satisfactory at the district.
Can I ask, so to be clear, this would just allow them to request a third year? All of that will still come before this board for approval?
That's a really good point. Thank you.
It is. This extends the board's authority to a third year of potential emergency certificates.
Okay.
This is going to be a very disruptive period of time when ordinarily, schools are beginning to plan for their hiring needs for the fall and extending this emergency certification further help with some of those concerns.
So those are the final three emergency rules. They will be a separate emergency consideration if you'd like to.
Okay. So then you've explained each of them. Do you want a separate vote or are we able to?
I believe one vote to cover these.
One vote for all the emergencies. Okay. So as you have heard this explanation of the three emergency rules that are here before you, is there a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Ms. Menney?
Aye.
Mr. Bobek?
Aye.
Mr. Flanagan?
Mr. Flanagan? Yes.
Ms. Bradley-Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Bolandbach?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Superintendent Hallmark?
Aye. All right, that motion carries. And now, board members, we have the discussion of permanent rules to consider on item C.
Thank you. And these are presented to you today because of a statutory deadline on submitting approved rules to the legislature, which is April 1st. So we are closing our irregular permanent rule considerations for the year.
Can I ask one question on that? You know, obviously the legislature is currently in suspension. If these rules, in addition to previous rules that we've submitted to the legislature, can you talk about the process by which if they don't take those up?
If the Administrative Procedures Act provides that if the Oklahoma Legislature does not consider a joint resolution to approve the rules or fails to consider them in any way, then the governor has the authority to approve or disapprove the rules. Generally, that would be one order of the governor approving all pending rules, although exclusions could be made, just like the legislature can make exclusions. So prior to last year, I believe the previous four years, that's actually how rules were adopted. Is that the legislature did not ultimately vote on the pending agency rules. They went through the process of review, but then the governor made the approval under the Administrative Procedures Act. So that is how that would operate if there were some sort of scenario that delayed that approval.
So there is still a mechanism to get approval for the rules even if the legislature does not have?
And the deadline of April 1st, if I recall, is still in place for submission of those.
Right. So that's why we're considering the rest of your permanent rules. And I'll take you briefly through those. I have number C1 on your agenda. This is an amendment to the Oklahoma Academic Scholar Recognition Rule. This is the rule that lays out requirements for a student obtaining the Oklahoma Academic Scholar status, which is a status of distinction. And it is being updated to add eligibility criteria for a seal of biliteracy. This is something that the World Languages Office is very excited about. The seal of biliteracy, which is something that other states have developed as well, will indicate that a student has demonstrated proficiency in both English and another language. And this is something that is available both to native English speakers and to students who speak a different primary language. The seal of biliteracy will be available in two levels of distinction based on levels of achievement in the languages. Those levels are gold and platinum. And there are eligibility criteria in the rule for performance in both English and other languages. So for performance in English, students can use any of the standardly available standardized tests like ACT, SAT, PSAT, AP. And for demonstrating their proficiency in other languages, either an AP test could be used for that or any other test, there's a list of several available assessments that are standardized in the field of languages. And if there is a language for which there is not a standard assessment, the rule provides that the State Department of Education will work with an appropriate linguistic or cultural entity to identify what would be appropriate for that. So any questions about adding a seal of biliteracy to the distinction? Okay, your next proposed rule. This is a new proposed rule, Guidelines for Minimizing Seclusion and Restraint of Students. This is a new rule in the Special Education subchapter of Curriculum and Instruction. So this rule codifies guidelines for a school's use of either student seclusion or physical restraint as a means of short-term emergency intervention. So to just quickly define that, seclusion is the involuntary confinement of a student alone in an area which the student is physically prevented from leaving. And that is a federal definition incorporated into the rule. Physical restraint is defined as a personal restriction that immobilizes or reduces the ability of a student to move their torso, arms, legs, or head freely. So these are emergency interventions that should only be undertaken under appropriate circumstances, which is what the rule addresses. The rule provides that in order to place a student in seclusion or restraint, several conditions must be met, including that the situation is an emergency with an imminent threat of danger to a person, not just property. And the other key requirement is that the school personnel involved are appropriately trained. And the rule also prohibits schools from applying corporal punishment to students with disabilities served under the IDEA. And the last provision of this rule is directing schools to submit an end-of-year report for easier tracking purposes of all of these incidents that occur. Any questions about this proposed rule or any of its content? All right, your-
Yes, please continue.
Your third consideration is a set of four rules. This is updates to the Reading Sufficiency Act. And these rules are being amended to incorporate changes to the governing law and related program updates. You'll see the terminology has been updated to reflect current statutes and the renaming of assessment components. There is a new provision proposed in section 210-15271 addressing submission and funding requirements. I would identify this as a new area of content. Historically, there has been delays in distribution of RSA funding because data must be received from all districts before the funding can be calculated at this first. So the new funding provision that's proposed associates the RSA data submission deadlines with eligibility for funding to avoid those delays that we've seen in timely distribution and get those RSA funds available to districts to provide to students in a timely manner. Some programmatic changes that were originally proposed as part of this amendment have been withdrawn from recommendation following public comment, and you will see that language reflected in your draft. And those issues will now be addressed through additional guidance that is currently being developed by the Office of Curriculum and Instruction. So do you have any questions about RSA changes or this update? All right, your last permanent rule consideration for the year is section 210-40877 Charter School Contracts. And very simply, this is an amendment to the Charter School Contract Rule. It only applies to charter schools sponsored by this board. And it incorporates the provisions that currently apply to contracts between charter schools and the SVCSB, the statewide virtual charter school board, just as a template of guidelines for an agency sponsoring a charter school. So any questions about charter schools or any of that content? That closes out your permanent rule consideration as well.
All right, very good. Is there a motion to consider these recommendations with permanent rules? Or, and then we can have discussion.
Come on.
We have a motion with Mr. Hernandez. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bolandbach?
Second.
All right, very good. Any discussion?
I had a question because the audio went out when she was describing the last point on the charter school. Lori, would you repeat that for me, please?
Yes, the charter school rule amendment, it specifically only applies to charter schools sponsored by the State Board of Education. And those new incorporated provisions are parallel to the provisions that SVCSB applies to their charter schools as a template for an agency contracting to be a charter school sponsor. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And seeing no further questions or discussion, please call the roll.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Bolandbach?
Aye.
Ms. Bradley-Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Bobek?
Aye.
Ms. Menney?
Aye.
Aye. All right, those, this motion carries and I appreciate very much the hard work of your team and legal with those rules, Ms. Haste. Board members, we are to a place now of entertaining an adjournment.
Oh, yes, before we do that, I want to make it clear before this body adjourns. And I would like Mr. Clark's input on this, going to the first motion that we did with our First Amendment on the order. I want to make it clear that when it comes to our extracurricular activities and our sports, we have schools across the state that of course are at a very high level when it comes to athletics. And I want to ensure that what we voted on does not permanently cancel their, where they're at, I understand because of CDC guidelines, they can't get together. Only 10 or less. So therefore, it has to be postponed. So this body is not saying that we are suspending any athletic activities that school districts may opt to continue in the future. And school districts can decide to continue with tournaments as scheduled. That they can continue with any, you know, a lot of our athletes are actually being looked at to be recruited into universities. So they're, this is all lingering. So I want to make sure that anything that's being put out there by media, it has not taken the wind out of our athletes saying, "We are completely canceling all of our sports in the state of Oklahoma." Is that so? Because that can be amended.
Sure. Thank you. The ending of the order as voted on applies to the entire order. And that ending that I'm referring to, the last paragraph says, "This order and the situation will be closely monitored, as we have all done, by the minutes in most cases." And so that if necessary, it can be amended. We talked about that earlier. So that's a partial answer to your question. The remainder of the answer is adhering to the CDC guidelines, as you mentioned. It would be very hard to have a basketball game, five-on-five, and a referee, not adhering to the CDC guidelines. But there may be other circumstances. They're going to vary case by case. It's my understanding and would be my recommendation that the intent of the order is, number one priority, is student, staff, person, safety. Then shift to the instructional capacity as voted on. And, you know, with number one, adhering to the CDC guidelines. But if a situation presents itself, we certainly don't want to negatively impact students, which is another part of the order. Graduation, scholarship, otherwise, we talked about OLAB on the academic side. So I understand, I'm just trying to answer the question as fully as I can with the intent of the order.
And CDC guidelines change because things change week by week, day by day.
Right.
That if those items with the CDC change, then we can revisit this and change the order to be able to continue on with any future sports, athletic, already scheduled and push them to the future and allow school districts to determine. So.
Absolutely. And just to illustrate that point exactly, in the distance learning- And just to illustrate that point exactly, in the Distance Learning Framework, initially there was a reference to groups of ten or more, and we changed that late last night to say adhering to CDC guidelines because those may change. They could go to six, they could go to 12. And so, in an effort to not have to continuously update the document, we wanted to put that in the document the way it is, and the same thing with this order.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that. I also have update news that since this meeting started, we now have an update that 164 cases have been confirmed with COVID-19 right here in Oklahoma, and we have five deaths. So, this is a dynamic, fluid situation. We have made recommendations. This board has taken action to respond to those needed steps to continue to safeguard our children, our school, members of the faculty and support staff, and the families that they all represent in communities. And it underscores the way this is going to have embedded flexibility to respond to be current with CDC guidance, and yet we know, again, underscoring, again, this is not permanent, this is a temporary measure. We don't know the length it will endure, but it is worth the struggle to schools to keep learning going while we maintain a level of security that we would not have without the board action today. And I thank each one of you for the conversations that you have with the public, with those who reach out to you, many, many text messages and phone calls, emails, posts on Facebook, questions that people have are all truly appreciated. This is part of being responsive to the public during a time where we need answers, and we want to be able to give as much specificity as possible, and I believe we have done that in an additional way today with this action. So, I do thank each one of you, and for those who have additional questions, more of those answers and specificity will come with the guidance that we are planning to publish this week and before the start of April 6th, when we expect our schools to continue the learning for students. At this time, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All right, there is a motion. Is there a second? And before I call that roll call, are there any other comments from board members?
I just echo Board Member Hernandez's comments about, you know, we're listening to community members. I will say, as far as athletic events and graduations and all of these things with great sympathy, we're making the decisions to keep all of our community safe. I think about the priority of learning and knowing that that can continue to happen and continue to exist. I just, again, I'm so grateful for this board, for the leadership at the State Department for leading us through these unknown times and knowing that critical decisions are being made on the forefront to ensure that our students are safe. I'd rather, at the end of the day, be known as overreacting and keeping individuals safe. That means that we're actually doing the right thing if it seems like this is an overreaction versus an underreaction and doing something too late. And so, I'm just really proud of the work that's continuing to move forward, the support of our entire community, because it's going to take all of us to make this happen and to serve our students. I just, again, want to say thank you, and to everyone that has reached out, you know, we hear you, we understand, and we want to be here to support you during this time as well.
And I think just to echo that, you know, to assure the public and everyone impacted by this, that this board is being very vigilant as far as, you know, monitoring the situation, which, I mean, a couple of weeks ago, we didn't know that we would be here today. And so, it is, you know, an ever-evolving issue that, you know, I know the State Department has been very much on top of, and we will continue to monitor it. And I know, you know, we've already had two emergency meetings, you know, that's something that I know that we're not afraid to do if the circumstances change and that we need to get back together to make any adjustments based on, you know, kind of the evolving situation. So, just to assure the public that this is something that we're continuing to monitor and can adjust if needed.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Any other comments? All right, then call the roll for adjournment.
Ms. Menney?
Aye.
Mr. Boebach?
Aye.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Bradley-Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Boenbach?
Aye.
Ms. Menney?
Aye.
Ms. Tootson-Hop?
Aye. All right, we are adjourned, and we will stay in touch. Thank you so much for your service. We will have media availability in just a moment, and I'll let others make any announcements that are needed related to that.
Yeah, excuse me, I would just say, news media, just call in on the Uber conference line in just a couple of minutes, and we'll start then.
All right, very good. Thank you. I'm going to step in here.
No, that's good.
Did they hear that?
They heard it through the Uber conference. They said here on Facebook.
Okay.
So the news, the media heard it.
Good. All right. Well, we'll begin this conference in media availability after we have just finished a historic virtual state board of education meeting. We know that our board has taken thoughtful consideration to responding at the time of a global pandemic with so many impacted in Oklahoma and throughout the country and throughout the world. It was necessary to take steps right now to ensure that our families are safe, our children are safe. We have child nutrition that is up and running and we have waivers to ensure that those students are able to be given food and continue with their nutrition. One moment. It looks like we have some technical difficulties.
Okay.
Okay.
We're getting out through the Zoom if you guys can pop down your audio.
Pop down your audio. Fun email call.
Could they put their phone on?
Can you guys put yourself on mute until? Is your phone muted?
Media, did you hear that?
Did you hear that? I mean, I.
I think we can hear through the Zoom, but it's kind of like a feedback situation.
Yeah. Can you move it away from that? Does it need to be?
No, it'll just pick it up. Is that any better?
That is better.
We'd ask that you mute your phone. That may assist. Why don't you call someone or where? So you can do what?
Okay.
Yeah, that's better. If she clears her file, then I think that we won't get it circulating.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Oh, if we mute the phone here, maybe. But I won't be able. Yes, that'll work. How does that work?
Is that better?
Is that better?
Oh, is that better?
That's better on my end. This is Stray Gray with Fox 25.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, that's not bad.
All right, I'll start again and just say thank you for those who have been reaching out. The board's action is truly unprecedented. What they did today.
Yeah, it's better. It's still like a huge delay, but that doesn't matter for us as long as you're know that we asked questions, it's a huge delay.
All right, very good. We're hearing from.
The board.
So I'll do my best to answer your questions. We know that in this time, we are rapidly depending on the updates from the health department with 169 cases now confirmed today. What's the most concerning beyond the fact that there have now been five deaths recorded? We have 59 hospitalized. This underscores the importance of why we took this step and how very critical it is that we flatten the curve so that that spike can slow. I will be happy to answer questions. I thank the board members who are standing here with me and those who joined us virtually for their leadership in responding for how we can keep our kids safe, but also education and learning continuing.
Okay, questions? Any questions?
Hello?
Yes. And if you would please state your name and who you are affiliated with.
Yeah, I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Do you want to say your name and who you are affiliated with?
Is that long delay?
Yes, hi there. It's Andrea Eager with the Tulsa World. I'm so sorry, this delay is very confusing. Hi there. So my question is about the end of school. If you could just address the flexibility for districts to determine what stage they have this already for students. That would be great.
Yes. We have set a range for school, the end of the school year at May 8th through May 15th.
We're going to have them call into the Zoom.
Actually, we're going to ask that instead of using this method, that we will ask you to call into the Zoom line instead of the Uber conference call. We think that will remedy. And what is that number? Can we write it down?
Yeah. Should we speak it into the microphone or?
Does anyone have that?
Sure.
It's the same one.
Okay. Give us about three, four minutes.
Yeah.
All right. We're going to give you about, there'll be a three-minute delay perhaps, and the media will get a different line. We apologize. We appreciate your patience. I know last time. It was just a different way because the board all had to engage. Trying to just continue with that and not lose the beat, but.
Are the media still calling?
There's no one saying, saying they've got a problem. It's way.
Is it on Facebook Live?
Yes. Do you need me to mute this for time being? Hello, Andrea?
Hello?
Oh, now we hear you. Okay.
Okay, it says I was unmuted.
Okay, good. Good.
Thanks.
Bear with us, just one moment.
Hello. Okay, it says I was unmuted.
Okay, good. Good.
Thanks.
Bear with us, just one moment.
Hello, Andrea?
Yes, I'm here.
Are you all also watching it on Facebook Live?
Um, I've got that on, but I muted it.
Oh, okay. Good.
Delayed quite a bit.
Yeah. We just want to make sure that the feedback or any feedback doesn't occur again, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Andrea, can you hear me?
Yes, I sure can.
How you doing?
I'm well. Who is this?
Oh, Kim Jackson. It should say at the top.
Oh, hi, Kim.
I'm not sure how you're on.
Okay. No, I'm just on the audio.
Okay.
Dial and number, so.
Just want to welcome all the media and let you all know to be sure that your Facebook, if you're watching Facebook Live, that it's turned down or it's not on in the background so that way the delay doesn't come through and interrupt Superintendent Hofmeister?
Oh, Kim Jackson.
Hey, guys. Thank you for your patience as we navigate this new world for us. Just give us a few more minutes. I want to give other folks an opportunity to register and then we'll start.
I have a question, if I can ask.
Yes, Ms. Jackson.
Well, thanks for all that you guys are doing for us. We really appreciate it. What we're looking at, what I'm looking at is like a bunch of, you know, individual squares, you know, with everyone's name in it. And then, you know, your monitor view is in a small square also. When it begins, will you guys maximize your square?
We're going to mute the guest camera and then they should be able to control that picture of the topic under.
Double click.
We will mute the guest camera and then.
Then you will have to pin the R view to your main screen.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I just did it. Okay, thank you.
And you'll have to, you can double-click the image and that will actually bring up the main screen.
All right, thank you so much.
I just want to do a sound test, make sure that you guys can hear and everything is working properly. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, this is Stray Gray with Fox 25.
Okay, great. Thank you, guys. I just want to give it one more minute and then we'll start.
All right, thank you again for those of you joining us, those of you who have been participating virtually with the state board of education meeting where we just made recommendation and adopted an amended order for our schools and education and how it relates to the conducting of education throughout the rest of the school year with distance learning. I'm happy to entertain any questions that are posed by the media, and I just want to open with a thank you for each of our board members and for all of those in the public who have been engaged around this, as well as those school leaders and district leaders who have been working so hard to ensure the delivery of meals, ramping up of these kinds of distance learning plans as they make plans for the future and the remaining school year where learning will continue, but in a different way. If you would, please mention your name and your affiliate.
Yes, hi there. This is Andrea Eager with the Tulsa World, and my question is just a request for clarification of the end date of this distance learning. If local districts can determine that, is there a set timeline or is it very open-ended? Thank you.
Yes. In response to our board, excuse me, in response to districts and the guidance and feedback from some of the members of our superintendent advisory, we did move to have a date range for the period of time for distance learning. And we set that at May the 8th through May the 15th to still give flexibility to districts where they would then conduct distance learning from April the 6th or as soon as that waiver and assurances are approved through the state department of education through the dates of May 8th or 15th. Somewhere in between there is ideal. We have not limited districts that choose to go beyond that date. We have not limited districts that choose to go beyond that date.
Hi, this is Kim Jackson from Channel 8 in Tulsa. Superintendent Hofmeister, how will you all be sure that some of the districts that do not have, that have students that don't have all the materials they need, such as computers, internet access, how will you make sure that they still receive adequate learning curriculums?
Well, we realize that this is different for different districts and different school sites and grade levels even within a district. And that will be met with our distance learning framework, which provides more opportunities beyond online learning that would be more appropriate for different grade levels. It is also going to be addressed through partnerships with Oklahoma various businesses and resources. For example, OETA, the PBS affiliate statewide for Oklahoma, is preparing with work with our curriculum and instruction team to provide daytime programming that meets the grade-specific and subject-specific academic standards for the remaining school year. But we are aware that there will need to be additional support and are working with both state and federal authorities to speed up the ability to deliver more options as we look at distance learning. But right now, we cannot wait for everyone to have a uniform offering. If we did that, we would then be delaying those who are ready to learn and have some of these online opportunities today. But that doesn't mean we stop our work to ensure everyone has a different set of opportunities than they do at this moment. We are going to be looking at how we can do that in the next days and weeks to come with our providers that are already in the state. And again, it's a work in progress, but there will be a state response.
Hi, this is Ben Felder. Sorry, this is Ben Felder with the Frontier. Superintendent, during today's meeting, you told the board the current distance learning order, quote, "may be a dry run for the future." I mean, I know anything more than a day away seems like a year at this point, but can you speak to what you have heard from health officials or others that would lead you to think that there's a chance the 2021 school year might also be disrupted and what work you guys might be doing in the months to come to just prepare for all types of situations?
Well, the short answer is we don't know. And what schools are really good at is planning many months in advance for the new school year. So what we're planning right now is for different delivery methods, alternative delivery methods beyond just the remaining months of the school year. And that is part of the work of school. And many don't realize how calendars are set a year in advance, and a great deal of planning and preparation is made long before the opening of the fall semester. So it's incumbent upon our districts to remain flexible. I believe this is a pole start to digital, online, individualized learning. It's part of a movement that Oklahoma schools have already been leading in to redesign how we deliver our education to students in a more personalized way, but it's one that can never miss the connection between the teacher and the student. And that connection doesn't have to be face-to-face, but it must be one that is personal, one that does work in a more blended method. And right now, that's part of the challenge. But we will overcome it and we'll be ready for what comes around the corner as we approach the summer and the fall semester.
Hi there. Zach Riel with KOCO. I was wondering if you know how many of the districts are ready to go right now with the distance learning? And also, if you could touch again what this means for the seniors who will be graduating in 2020?
We'll have more information once our survey is back on Friday morning. We have a survey that was sent out actually yesterday. Districts are asked to complete that. It's not very extensive. But we will be able to provide a more clear picture of where they are and where they need to be to deliver in the method they desire. This is also, though, not without current information that we know over 200 of our districts already have had years of planning and even implementation of online virtual learning in their school districts already. So those may want to expand that, or they may have to do that in a different method than what they had done more blended in the past. But this, again, is something we'll know more on Friday. The second answer is about graduation, to address your question. We know a lot of our kids are going to be affected, thousands and thousands of seniors who have pressed forward through all kinds of difficulties, who have made this their goal to walk across that stage and graduate and move into a new time of adulthood and continued learning in career tech or in college or the military. We don't want them to be delayed in any of this. So I've asked our districts to turn their attention first, once they have the distance learning plan in place, and examine what we can do for those who were on track to graduate, to be able to seamlessly move to that point. Then, we need to honor them. We need to respect all of that work and celebrate this in a new way. The CDC current guidelines would not make a traditional graduation ceremony possible. But we're looking for innovation and in a way that still highlights that work and allows families to celebrate the accomplishments of their students. And teachers want to celebrate that, too. They've been a part of this. There are counselors, and there are school principals and assistant principals, cafeteria workers, those who have cheered on those students for 12 or 13 years, and we want that to continue.
Hi, this is Sarday Gray with Fox 25, KOKH. So how will this apply to rural schools, especially since you said this is distance learning? Since this won't be completely online, how will this affect those who don't have access to computers or any other devices?
I think it's a great distinction that needs to be made. Distance learning does not mean digital learning or virtual online with a computer. It could mean that we have teachers and students connecting through telephone. It could mean the delivery of lessons with a bus route that is delivering food and meals at the bus stops as well. It could also be incorporated with the OETA daytime programming that we will have a hand in selecting in a way to meet the needs of the Oklahoma standards for the remaining part of the school year. There's going to be new innovative ideas, and I don't think that our rural school districts are all at a place of disadvantage. We have Google Classroom being used all across the state, and many of them are in rural communities. So we will have a better idea of what is lacking, where we need mobile hotspot devices to give connectivity even through a cell phone to the class and continued learning. But you're correct that there are going to be some communities disadvantaged, but they may not all be rural.
Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Ben again with the Frontier. If I can ask one more question. This was addressed in the meeting, but Superintendent, could you clarify just the advancement of students from this year to next? I know you said you want districts to kind of make that a seamless process, but for kids that weren't on track to be promoted to the next grade, just kind of what's that going to look like if you know it all?
Well, any time in a school year when you are at March 25th, it is not the end of the school year. So students who need to undergird their skills, build and reinforce, still have those weeks left to do that, and we need to be able to provide that, which is why we have made this decision today. It is always the responsibility and determination of the local school and families together to make decisions about moving forward. But we do expect our students to be able to continue learning and be able to be promoted to the next grade level. There should also be an opportunity for summer learning where we reinforce those skills again and continue to have more strategic skill-building and efforts placed around weaknesses. But that's not just our sole focus. We have students who are ready for more, who need enrichment, and we are not leaving those students behind either. And actually, the ability to go at their own pace may be actually a little bit easier with some form of individualized progression through some areas where they have online platforms.
Hi, this is Kim Jackson again from Channel 8 in Tulsa. Just a question about the actual school buildings, because in Tulsa, they've had online learning or distance learning available, but at some point, the students would need to come in and take tests and so forth. Will the school buildings be open at all for distance learning or for parents to drop off assignments or students to go take tests?
Well, there shouldn't be any state-level tests that are given, and those that would be given for the monitoring of progress and the adjustment of instruction can still be provided through the distance learning model. We do not want to see our students in the schools. This is a place where we know they are wanting to be together again, but it is very important that we underscore to teachers and to our students and their families to be extra cautious, limit their activity outside of social distancing, and stay home. And as you are having to be out, to be mindful of the time period that the coronavirus does live on surfaces that they may be touching and spreading. So that is why it's so important that we talk about washing our hands, and we want that to continue.
This is Preston Jones with Fox 23 in Tulsa. We've gotten a lot of questions about what will happen to support staff? Will they still be paid? Will that be left up to the district and kind of what will happen to them?
Support staff are under a contract, and they are either a nine-month, for example, or 10-month contract. It depends on their particular position and within the district. So they will be paid now that we are going back to work anyway, so they'll be at work. But it would be through distance learning or supporting those key essential administrative functions that we've outlined before with billing and HR and child nutrition, et cetera, and keeping that area sanitized. But we also know that there is a time right now that we have been in where there was a question about whether or not they could be paid during a time of no work. And that would be addressed through a measure if it was an extended period of time. But since we know this is limited now and that we are moving back on April 6th into the business of schools and educating, but through distance learning, I don't foresee this being the problem that we once feared. I can tell you that some of our districts have liberally provided more sick days for those who have been out of work during this period of cessation.
Superintendent, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hi, this is Naria from The Oklahoman. You mentioned the federal government could assist with connecting to as many students as possible. I was wondering if you could expound upon what kind of specific federal help you all might be seeing as we move forward?
Some of the help that we would like to see is for the title dollars, which are federal dollars that are devoted and dedicated to a particular support for students either in poverty or those of special needs or those earmarked for English learners, et cetera, teacher professional development, there's a whole host of them. There could be a relaxing of some of those rules that would allow districts to expend the funds they have currently from the federal fund on these areas of distance learning that may have been prohibited earlier. That is one area. We have looked at our state dollars. For example, Reading Sufficiency Act is a large item, line item that the legislature gave last year where they moved from a traditional allotment of 6.5 million to support struggling readers to 12 million. And those are dollars that have already been distributed to schools this semester, and we have indicated that we will relax the approval of those expenses to support distance learning and those students and others as well. Textbook funds are another area. When it comes to other federal relief, we do anticipate that the, that those in Congress have heard and will respond with the need for technology and connectivity as well as mobile hotspots, the subscriptions that are monthly subscriptions that go per household or per child. And that is part of the conversations that we're having in identifying needs, putting a dollar figure to those, and submitting those to Congress.
Thank you.
This is Ben with the Frontier again. Just one more question. Yesterday, Governor said that he had been working closely with you on, you know, getting to this point. What do you need from the executive branch? What possible things might you need, if any, from the legislature this year in order to more seamlessly make this transition or better support schools during this time?
Well, thank you. This is, again, fluid and dynamic. And today, we may have an idea of what we need, and I think that changes rapidly. While they're still in session, we are in close communication with both members of the House and Senate Appropriation Chairs, who are, in fact, very, very, very close communication, texting information or calling with questions about how to prepare for what's coming with our future budget and our current needs. I think identifying the area of how do we work right now to find any form of savings that we have to still take care of our students and schools is more of the conversation we're having with the legislature. The other would be with the Governor's Office and with his cabinet secretaries have more to do with coordinating a statewide answer as we respond to the information we receive in the survey around technology and distance learning. We are on Zoom calls, conference calls, to coordinate with our partners at higher education and in career tech as well, so that our students that are enrolled in those services concurrently can complete their work as those in June, you know, the 11th grade or 12th grade year. There are many other details that need to be answered, and there may need to be a legislative solution or remedy, and we're bringing that to them as we identify that, and we appreciate that support.
Superintendent, Dana Hurtneke at KWTV, Channel 9, was having some difficulty with the audio. So the question she has, the President talked yesterday about opening the country by Easter. If that were to happen, would you consider opening schools back up?
We're going to respond to what's happening in Oklahoma. We made our decision independently of other states and will continue to do that. Our board is going to rely on those who are examining the mathematical modeling of the coronavirus and the community transmission right here in Oklahoma, and that will guide our steps. We would love to see a miracle. And yet, we believe the steps we have taken today are going to benefit Oklahoma and the spread of the coronavirus so that it does not peak too quickly in Oklahoma and that we can slow that spread and respond. Right now, 59 people in the hospital with coronavirus. We want to slow the spread so that they can give the treatment that will be life-saving instead of a time where they are... that will be life-saving instead of a time where they are overwhelmed with patients and unable to provide what we could provide today. So this is our part and that's our call. Oklahomans, all are called to do their part. And this does mean some sacrifice, but that's not new for Oklahomans. Oklahomans stand together. They come together at times of crisis. They help their neighbors and their loved ones and families and appreciate that while they may not have symptoms, they may be carrying the virus and encountering someone who has a suppressed immune system or is of high risk. So we just ask that we continue to keep our focus on others and we look for ways to solve problems, to support our healthcare providers and those who are on the front lines today in Oklahoma who are making us safe. And we appreciate all of the feedback and input. And we'll continue to receive that and act based on the science that we see today.
One last question, if anyone has anyone?
Yeah, I just had one more question. This is Chardonnay Gray with Fox 25. So you mentioned the grab and go meals for students. We know that OKCPS has been doing that for breakfast and lunch. Is this a part of that program or is this a different program?
It is a part of that. So that would not have been possible had we not been granted the waivers that we requested. Now, at least six different waivers we requested from the U.S. Department of Agriculture. We received those waves, some of those waivers, not all. We're still pending some that I want and we're going to continue to fight for. But it is now an opportunity we have to take some of the arrangements that are allowed during the summertime and deliver those meals or provide grab and go delivery at a curbside in the school year. And there's another called Meals to You, which would be coming through the mail. And that would be more than like a week's supply of ingredients for students to have two nutritious meals a day. And that will be very helpful in some of our remote locations particularly.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.